Yes, the City Council considered those matters listed on the agenda and there are no reportable actions.
Hello, good evening Mayor and council members. I would like to introduce you to Nisha Caldwell, the City of Norco's new Accounting Manager. Ms. Caldwell joins the City of Norco with 15 years of experience in accounting, budget management, and financial services. In her previous position at UCR, she managed a $17 million salary and benefits budget, and oversaw the position management and an employee award program for an on-campus organization. She earned an MBA with a concentration in accounting from Cal Poly Pomona and is certified in people management specializing in building management and leadership skills. Ms. Caldwell resides in the city of Rancho Cucamonga with her five-year-old daughter. When she's not working, they spend time enjoying the outdoors and amusement parks. The accounting manager is a critical position in the finance department, and I have full confidence in Ms. Caldwell and will be a significant addition to our city. With that, I'd like to introduce you to Ms. Nisha Caldwell.
Thank you for the warm welcome. Thank you for the introduction, Azad. I am extremely grateful to join the City of Norco and am honored to take on challenges that lie ahead of me. I look forward to improving our department in an effort to provide excellent customer service to residents, and also implementing new policies and procedures while improving upon existing ones at the same time. Thank you again.
How did you need to roll?
I was running the week after I had mine.
I got robbed.
Now we have a sad but celebratory presentation. Tonight, the Norco City Council will formally congratulate Planning Director Steve King on his retirement. Steve has been in our planning department for 21 years, and I guess when he heard, I guess when I heard he was retiring, he decided he didn't want to stay anymore. Was that done right? I guess when he heard I was retiring, he didn't want to stay. Okay, we got that. But seriously, Steve is one of the hardest-working people I know. During his decades in Norco, he has had to juggle residents, developers, planning commissioner, council members, and a lot of policy changes. Yet he always did it with a smile. I think I can speak for the entire council when I say Steve is really going to be missed around here. With Steve's retirement, the city will lose a lot of institutional knowledge, but we wish him great happiness in the next phase of his life. With that, I present this award to Steve, which reads, "The City of Norco hereby recognizes and commends Steve King for over 21 years of outstanding and dedicated service to the residents of Norco." Steve, would you please come forward, please? Say something new.
It definitely has been a ride, and I've had the pleasure of working with a group of staff that are the best, that I could have asked for. They seriously have helped me through the years. We've been able to accomplish a lot, working together. We've had excellent council members that have made some tough decisions that have allowed the city to be where it is today. I won't go through all of those, but I think you all know what they are. And it's just been, it's been a ride. That's the best way to put it. There's been good times, there's been bad times, but in the end, it's made me a better person, and I'm grateful to have been able to work here. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Steve, since I was on planning commission, it was, like you said, a ride. We had, on a planning commission, started the numbers, writers, that came in. Those were fun things that we talked about and discussed, the housing, on council. Alma, has he got his desk cleaned off yet? But I have to admit, I was shocked, and I'm gonna roast you a little bit. I always knew Steve had plenty of work, but you could never find him. You have to look and see if he was in it all. Got his file of paper. But he always knew where something was. So, but Steve, I'm gonna miss you because you have a lot of historical value, of what went on and everything. No matter what, he kept to our rule, and we appreciate you for all of that.
So Steve, I just want to say thank you for being humble and kind. It's so important. And I started in a time where there was a little bit of turmoil in your department, and I came in and I felt like I was in the middle of a storm. And you're always so calm. You answer questions, and you're kind, and you treat people with respect regardless of how they treat you. And not many people do that anymore, so thank you very much.
Well, buddy, now I was counting up the years, and it's like, we've worked together for like 18 or 19 years, and then I was thinking back, and when Berwin mentioned institutional knowledge, and how that's gonna be missed, not only with, you know, staff members and council members, and it's a very critical thing, but thinking back to those, right in the very beginning with, when we had the planning commission hearings at the college with the harness track, you know, and you didn't have gray hairs then. And then I spent three terms on planning with Steve, and then we rolled right into Norco Ridge Ranch, and that's where I went off the rails. But you've always been solid, steady, and you've always listened. And you know all the talks we have, you know, and I've always appreciated that. They've always been straightforward, and for the most part, honest. But gonna miss you. I know Alma's gonna do a great job. And, you know, it was one, like, you've been here almost as long. So, you know, it all kinda started, and then I thought about, you know, my early days on the commission, and Jim Wilson, Paul Ryan, Wayne Hinson, Henderson, I mean, a bunch of jerks. You know, they were tough. They really were. They were a nasty planning commission. And, you know, you handled it. And what Ted mentioned also, and I'll leave it with that, I think you have held your own for having the most disastrous office next to Joe Shank. And the over-under is, I don't think you'll be able to clean it up. So, but it's been a pleasure working with you for all these years. Thanks, Steve.
Let me interest you before you were here. I remember when you came in, I was a commissioner. Things I think about when I think of you are some pretty cool projects. I think Hamner Avenue, the fight you had to keep the architecture there. I think that people don't realize what you did. One of my most thrilling days was when I mentioned Claude Bealman, and nobody else will know who that is, but you did. I was like, oh my gosh, you know who that is! And I was so excited. Our discussions about the Norconian and that kinda stuff. Going up and down Sixth Street, trying to figure out ways to get people with long, skinny properties to give them up and not wanna charge, and kill all the projects all around them. Those were fun days. But yeah, I remember your first day, actually. That was right in the middle of the hills, and that was really fun. Wasn't that fun? We enjoyed that. A shovel will work, in terms of the office, but I disagree. I think it's not even close to Joe Shank's office. I think it's like W.C. Fields in the movie where he sort of picks the roll-off desk. Yeah, I'm gonna miss you. I'm gonna miss our talks. And we've had our battles, you and I. But I have to agree with Robin. I think you were always calm, and I really think you need to be proud of some of the things that you stuck to your guns with in the City of Norco. There are things that you're responsible for that you did a great job. Now, the big problem we're gonna have is who is Roger gonna have lunch with? Big problem, right, Roger? So you gotta find, Sam is sitting over there, maybe invite him to lunch, I don't know. Anyway, good luck, congratulations. And 20 years, man, that's 21 years. That's a long time.
Do you wanna say something?
Yeah. So what Robin said, but I... I have a lot of pictures.
Somebody else wants to speak?
Steven, I gotta talk to you this afternoon. I was just kidding, dude. I live here.
Yeah, I won't stand up. But first of all, when I think of Steve, I think of him as a short-timer. Come on, it's only 21 years. Can't hang any longer than that. As a city attorney, though, the thing that I appreciate most about Steve, unlike not so many, not so much staff members here, but staff members I've had to deal with before, Steve, if he has questions or concerns, always calls me. We spend a lot of time talking about how we should go, and what direction, and how we should massage language, and things like that, that make my job significantly easier. And I hope that I make Steve's job, or made Steve's job somewhat easier, too. But our relationship is always terrific for the reasons that Robin describes, and I will miss you. I mean, I hope you come back and visit, but if you don't, you know, the orange circle isn't that far away, and come down and I'll buy you lunch.
You're in the middle, Steve. You're the man of the hour.
I see SC. Steve? I see SC, that was fun. Nobody would talk to us, and then everybody wanted to talk to us.
Okay, the next item is the City Council Communication Reports on Reasonable Boards and Commissions. We'll start off with Mayor Pro Tem Bash to start the communications, and PowerPoint will appear on the screen for each council member.
I'm sorry, I didn't get my list in. I haven't done that much. We did have a pretty cool WRCOG session that went very, very well. I was pretty happy with that. And then we put four names on the memorial for Tuesday. Thank you, Brian. Two guys that were 18-years-old, and then we also had an Agent Orange victim wounded, and then we had a baton death march survivor who died in a Japanese concentration camp. So I guess we're gonna have some small, Brian, either just small little gatherings. But I was real proud of that, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Grunmeyer.
So the only thing that I have to share is that on the 24th, I believe, myself and Chad and Andy went out to Vermontes, and that is where our horse manure goes. And the reason that we went is I had, every year when we review the contracts, we get a kind of a standard form letter from Vermontes. Your costs are going by X number of cents per ton or whatever because of the trash that's, that we're having to sort out of the manure. So I wanted to see what the loads look like and what the trash was, and get some more measurable amounts. So I just have some pictures here. This is when the trucks are actually dumped at Vermontes to start with. And so you can see, there's some loads that are a little cleaner, but then you can see like a load that's kinda midpoint in that pile that is obviously dirty. And then in the next picture, again, this is another, the truck just dumped from coming from Norco, and you can see the trash that's mixed in with what should be clean manure. And then, again, common contamination throughout the piles. I won't lie, I was shocked by the amount of bags of household trash, and it's probably one of those things, I'm out of room in my trash can, there's a little bit of space in my manure bin, I'm gonna throw it on top. Other things that I wasn't surprised by include hay string, feed sacks, and then, you know, every good Norconian probably has an adult beverage while they're out doing chores, so those remnants are left in the bins as well. And I'm gonna say the last three didn't surprise me, but the amount of household trash was definitely shocking to me. So what they have to do, they have to run the manure through, basically, I would equate to a large tumbler, to get the trash and stuff out. So this one, this pile here has been through just one round in the tumbler to get the contaminants out. And then the last picture, I believe that I have, this is after three rounds. This will all be picked up, put into a big roll-off, and taken back to the landfill, at which point, you know, I think we will start getting some weights and measures on how much trash we're actually sending from our manure. So I'm going to be revisiting this with the residents. We clearly need to do some education, and we need to do a better job as residents, being responsible for what we're sending to Vermontes, and the implications of what we're sending, not only on the costs associated with that, but the environmental impacts and that kinda stuff. A real eye-opener for me that day, and so I certainly wanna say thank you to Chad and Andy for going. It was extremely hot that day. And so, and thank you to Glenda from Waste Management for coordinating with Vermontes so we could go. And like I said, we'll revisit this issue, but this is mostly just to kinda get it out in front of people. I really thought we were not sending trash to Vermontes in our manure, but we clearly are, and we're gonna have to do a better job. So that's all I have to share for today.
Thank you. Catherine Munhoffman.
Yeah, I, just a couple of things. And I said, the Lafco meeting, the meeting of the George Ingalls Master Plan Committee, we set, we recapped some projects. And today, we met again with the ground supervisors. We're trying to fix some of the wall, the ground up there to prevent some more flooding. But one of the things, and this is a short presentation, for those of you that were here on Tuesday, August 25th in the afternoon, I'm very proud of Norco, and the Norconians, and what the tribute we showed to Corporal Villanueva, the Marine that was killed off a training accident. But let me read this to you. This came from Leon Tapaski-Dreyer, and I probably didn't say his name right. He wrote this the day following. "Yesterday, I had the privilege of driving the hearse which carried the body of Corporal Villanueva from the Ontario Airport to Crestlawn. Our journey took us down Sixth Street to Crestlawn. In 12 years of working there, I have never witnessed a local turnout of people, of local people to salute a young soldier. All the way, people lined both sides of the street, waving flags, veterans saluting, children waving, flags, waving flags, people crying, and many crossing themselves as a symbol of blessing. I had a soldier riding with me. We were both crying. The corporal's family members were all, were so blessed. I'm so proud of Norco." That says a lot about our town. And as a member of the Veterans Committee, I had other veterans there, Kevin was down there with me. I'm very proud of our town for showing this respect. Also, to the American Legion motorcycle riders, I wanna give a special thanks to Gary Evans. He's held the photos, along with Travis Walsh, with the big flag and the big flag. And that's Norco, folks. That is us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted.
CDA Board Meeting tomorrow. So next meeting, I'll have a report on the Chino Basin desalter. Thank you.
That poor little mouse. Okay, so, and this is a true... Okay, so, and this is a true happening here, it's not science fiction. But they have engineered 750 million genetically engineered mosquitoes approved for release in the Florida Keys. The plan to release over 750 million genetically modified mosquitoes into the Florida Keys in 2021 received final approval from local authorities against the objection of many local residents and a coalition of environmental agency groups. And what these do is that it stops the reproduction of mosquitoes. So they turn these out and they breed, they don't come up with any eggs or anything like that, so it eventually really cut down on the population of mosquitoes. They've done this with flies back in the early 60s down in South Texas because they had the, when an animal would get a cut on its leg or somewhere on its body, these flies would attack it and they would leave larvae in there, like maggots, they call them the screw worms. And this plant down at Mission, Texas, made all these flies and they'd go along in airplanes and fly real low and drop them out. And it finally, after a few years, eradicated the screw worm problem. And then two years ago, they had to start back up in certain states because they were back, and I think Florida was one of the states. But now they've come out with this mosquito to try to eradicate some of those mosquitoes that really cause bad diseases. And that's the only report I had this week. That's cute little fly, the mosquito you had there, Matt. Thank you. Okay. Item two is the City Council Consent Items. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Prior to the motion to consider any action by the council, any public comments on any of the consent items will be heard. There will be no separate action unless members of the council or the audience request specific items be removed from the consent calendar. Items removed from the consent calendar will be separately considered under item three of the agenda. Do we have any, anybody from the audience or public that...
We have no speaker cards for this item.
Okay, does anybody on the council want to pull any items? We have a motion and a second to approve, please vote.
Councilmember Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna? Yes. So item three, we don't need to use. Item four is public comments. This is the time when persons viewing, wishing to address the City Council regarding matters not on the agenda may be heard. Please email the city clerk. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the City Council's ability to respond to comments on non-agendaized matters at the time such comments are made. The City Council shall not discuss or take action relative to any general public comment. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, I just have one that came in, from Bonnie Slager. "I would like to invite the residents of Norco to the Candidates Night sponsored by NHA and Rule on Thursday, September 17. It will be at Silver Lakes Park at 7:00 PM. The gates open at 6:00 PM. This will be a drive-in event where everyone will stay in their cars for the event and hear the candidates on their FM radio and see them on a screen. The event is free, no parking costs or admission fee. All of the candidates will be asked the same questions. The event will not be recorded. I hope all voting residents of the city of Norco will attend this event to get a chance to know their candidates better before the election. Thanks, Bonnie Slager, President, Norco Horsemen's Association." And that's all.
Thank you. And that begins at 6:00 PM? I mean, admit it starts at 6:00 PM?
It will be at, the Silver Lakes Park at 7:00. The gates open at 6:00 PM.
Okay, 6:00 PM. Thank you. Okay, we got the City Council Discussion Items, Action Items. Order of Presentation for Discussion Items. Staff Report Presentation. Council Questions of Staff. Public Speakers in Favor, Against, or Neutral. Council Discussion and Action. Item A is a request for approval of impact fee reduction, and this is yours, Andy.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Council, this is a discussion item, item number five A, regarding a request from a resident, Mr. Tim Chamber, for a partial refund of development impact fees that he paid for the development of an equestrian event facility at 379 North Drive in the agricultural estate zone. The CUP to construct this facility was taken up by the Planning Commission on December 11, 2019. The Planning Commission reviewed the CUP and denied approval of the CUP. It was subsequently appealed to the City Council, and the City Council had the appeal on January 15, 2020. And upon hearing the merits of the facility, the City Council did reverse the action by the Planning Commission and went ahead and approved the CUP for the construction of the event center. One of the conditions for approving that CUP was a requirement that the payment of development impact fee as well as TUMF and MISHP fees were required. As a result of that, the city did assess this resident development impact fees, which was paid directly to the city of Norco in the amount of $47,383.81. These impact fees were assessed on the basis that this event center is a commercial project. So that was the basis for which this impact fee was assessed. However, the center itself is developed on a residential property. And of course, it creates a unique situation, given that we have a residential property upon which this event center is built upon, leading to the assessment of a commercial impact fee. In my opinion, although this event center is planned to be used for commercial activities, it is really ancillary to the residential project development that currently exists on the property. And based on this unique situation, it is my opinion that the impact that is to be generated from this facility is going to be less than the impact that would be generated of a comparable commercial development that operates as a full enterprise on a seven-day basis, operating ten to 12 hours on any given day. The question, though, is because it generates a less impact, what is the appropriate amount of refund that should be granted to this resident? Unfortunately, there is no objective way of making that assessment, but it is my opinion that perhaps a refund of anywhere between 25% to 50% would be appropriate. I did also discuss this issue with the consultants that did the city's impact fee study, to hear from them in terms of how they would take a look at this situation. They did agree that it is reasonable to grant some refund of impact fee, given the fact that because of the existence of the residential development on this property, that the impact and the purpose for which this event center will be used, the impact on existing city infrastructure will be less than a development that is entirely for commercial purposes and operates that way. One of the things they suggested that could be a way of looking at this is to individually take a look at each one of the development impact fee categories and decide what should be granted. For example, park impact fee as well as trails impact fee. Because of how this facility is going to be used, they do not believe that that generates any impact to either parks or trails. And therefore, they believe those impact fees could be refunded in its entirety. With respect to streets, sewer, and water, again, they take a look at the fact that there is already a residential development that is already in existence, and that the way this facility is proposed to be used would result in a less impact, again, when you compare that to a fully functioning commercial development. So even though they didn't give me specific amount that they believe should be refunded, their recommendation would be to waive the park impact fee, waive the trails impact fee, and consider refunding them a portion of both the streets, water, and sewer impact fees. This is an item for the City Council to consider, whether you, the amount, whether impact fee refund is appropriate, and if so, what amount should be refunded to the resident. That concludes my report and take any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Ted?
Yeah, I just, Andy, I know we have TUMF funds on, that's not part of it, correct?
No.
Because those, we have nothing to do with. So anything we would have paid to WR cog, it's, they've already got their money, and they, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so this is something that just impacts us. Okay, thank you.
Kevin? Robin?
Andy, has this money already been accounted for in our fiscal year budget? Like, it's already in there?
Well, yes, the revenue has already been received and recorded in the city's books. Obviously, we've, to the extent that we refund any amount, that will reduce the amount that is already recognized as part of the city books.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Most of mine is, in all ways, is discussion-based, but one question, Andy, and overall, I'm concerned that we're setting a precedent on this, that, you know, the action of the Planning Commission and then the action that council took, you know, I believed at the time, the council action, we focused on the success of the project. And with that, in your staff report, you comment the facility is expected to operate occasionally for a limited amount of hours, and also expected to generate less impacts than a commercial activity that operates many hours a day. But in the conditional use permit, I believe what we had in there as far as hours of operation is this facility is allowed to operate seven days a week, and by the allowable operation, operational hours, I think that went from eight o'clock in the morning approximately into early evening, they could hold multiple events daily. So I guess my question is, with this expectation that it will be limited and it's an ancillary use, the conditional use permit allows them to operate seven days a week. Should the conditional use permit be revised to reflect limited hours of operation so that those impacts couldn't happen?
My answer to that is, I did have the time to speak with Mr. Chamber. One of the things he comments or his statements to me is, this is, I live here. Therefore, my intent is not to run this thing as a, all the time, operate all the time as it could, if it was a totally standalone commercial enterprise. Those are where his statements to me, that he doesn't want to do that. He doesn't want to operate it. He wants to have peace in his house as well. And when these activities are going on, obviously, it impacts his ability to enjoy his house as well. This was a comment he made to me. As to whether the hours of operation can be modified in the conditional use permit, this is a discussion I had with him. And as whether this sets a precedent, I think we have refunded impact fees in the past, depending on the circumstances. Each, I do not think it sets a precedent. Whenever a request for fee refund is received, the circumstances pertaining to that situation needs to be evaluated, and the merits determine if there is a basis to refund any impact fee or if there is not. I don't think just because you ask for a refund of impact fee, you get entitled to it.
Yeah, to the extent that it establishes precedent, it's only that the potential exists for the reduction of impact fees, but it's based upon the individual circumstances and the burdens on the applicant to show why the impact fees and his unique circumstances don't apply.
Is that typically beforehand, it's not after the effect, that when we heard this originally with council, there was an agreement to pay all the fees, and all the fees were paid at that time. This is coming afterwards. We made allowances with this originally, with reducing a lot of the requirements that There you go.
And you're right. I mean, that's part of the uniqueness. I'm not suggesting that you need to do anything in particular, but the circumstances are different from what the council anticipated them to be at the time you approved the CUP, and I think are different than the applicant believed they were at the time you approved the CUP, which is why he's now here asking. There's obviously no legal obligation for you to refund anything in particular.
Yeah, I mean, don't take me wrong. I like the project, I like the facility. It's just that, we didn't create the situation. We made concessions at the previous meeting, you know, like example, like, we won't require a grease interceptor, we won't require this. We did give seven-day-a-week approval, you know, for use. We made a lot of concessions, and at no ti, and all these fees were fined and paid, and now this comes after the fact. And it's also in, it seems to me, in the letter from the property owner, "Any reduction of fees will be greatly appreciated. We will be addressing the slope issues next and need to use the additional funds to fix that issue." We did not create the issue with the slopes, okay? That was caused by the property owner way before this came to council the first time. So I'm having a problem saying, let's re, you know, now you're coming back saying, reduce the, you know, reduce the fees to help me out on a situation that I've also created before this ever came forward to council. So that's where I'm a little concerned about setting a precedent. Basically, that's about all my two cents with that for now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, let me add...
Oh, I'm sorry, Andy.
...what is one, is that apparently, when these folks come here and agree to do all these things, especially pay these fees, I don't think he knew exactly how much these fees amounted to. It appears after he had paid the fees, he was shocked by the amount of commercial impact fee that he had to pay, at least based on my conversations with him. And that is not to say that is a basis for him being entitled to a refund, but these are one of the comments he made. I don't think he was, this was what caused it.
Well, I guess my comment to that is, and like I said, I'm not trying to take away from... from what we did previously to try to make this project successful, but he should have been aware of the fees when he first went to staff and then decided to go ahead and do these improvements without building permits. Once again, we didn't create the situation. Okay? Thanks.
Yeah, go ahead.
Andy, I have another question, real quick, kind of off of what Greg said. In the past, when impact fees have seen a reduction, is that typically before permits and stuff are issued, or is it after the fact?
Actually, we can get a reduction prior to paying the fees.
So...
Pay the fees and then ask for a refund or a reduction.
Okay, so this is the typical order and manner in which it's done? Okay, thank you.
Steve, on his conditional use permit, was there a stopping time at night when he needed to stop operating, making noise or whatever?
Oh, man, picking my brain here. I think it was 10:00 p.m. at night and couldn't start before 7:00 a.m. in the morning.
'Cause I remembered that something about 10:00 p.m., he said they usually stopped their birthday parties and stuff around 10:00.
Correct.
Okay, Lieutenant, this will be for you. Do you know if we've had any calls for noise complaints over there? I know there's one neighbor that calls me, but I think he calls Kevin also. But I don't know if your officers have had to go down there.
I remember when we first were looking into it, there were some calls for service, but we got to narrow down the timeframe. And I would have to research that again, as far as what timeframe you're looking at, as far as any calls for service, as far as noise from the farm.
But it hadn't been constant?
No.
Like every week or every day or...
Not that I recall.
Yeah, okay.
For what it's worth, my recollection from the Planning Commission meeting was that the complaints came before he enclosed the facility that he was using. And the complaint, the noise complaint stopped. The reason he did it was because of the noise complaints.
That's kind of what I remember, that they wouldn't, that your officers hadn't been down there that many times, like at some places in town that...
Not that I recall.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else got anything to add? Ted?
This is just a math question. Andy, so, and I'm trying to, you're suggesting between 25% to 50% reduction, correct? And is that on the $47,000?
Uh, $47,000 was there.
Okay, so we're looking between, based on my basic math, between $11,845 to 50% at $23,690. Is that correct? About right there?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I'm looking at the numbers right. Thank you.
Did we have any cards from the public on this?
We have no speaker cards on this item.
Okay, so what's your pleasure, folks?
Well, I think it's an asset to the community, and I totally understand where Greg's coming from, but we're in the middle of a pandemic. The slope is, I get he shouldn't have done it, but I also know that that slope has been problematic. So I'll make a motion that we cut 50% of his fees.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Vote? Councilmember Grumeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
No.
Mayor Proton Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Motion passes with Councilmember Newton voting no. Thank you.
It's been a long evening, hasn't it? Okay, item number 5B, this Small Enterprise Assistance Loan, better known as SEAL Program. Andy, this is yours also. Oh, hi, Roger.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. On behalf of the Economic Development Advisory Council, I'd like to introduce you to the Small Enterprise Assistance Loan Program, or SEAL Program. The framework for the SEAL Program was recommended by the business owners on EDAC, and I'll touch on some of the most important elements. The SEAL Program is available to any business or nonprofit with less than 25 employees. The loans are between $5,000 and $20,000 with terms up to five years. The interest rates are graduated. The first 18 months of any loan is entirely interest-free. From months 19 through 36, we charge a 2% simple interest. And from months 37 through 60, should it go that long, we charge a 3%. There's no prepayment penalties. And it's structured so that people are encouraged to pay off the loan quicker. And the more quickly that money comes back to the city, the more opportunities it creates for other business owners. In an effort to protect the city's interests, all loans are personally guaranteed by the business owner. Each application will be considered by a loan committee comprised of EDAC members assisted by staff. Now, we hope these loans will assist local businesses recover from the pandemic, but this is not a COVID program. It is designed for all seasons, all types of economies. In better times, businesses can use these loans to expand their operations in Norco. In tougher times, these loans can help them survive. It's an important business retention strategy, and I hope it sends a message to the business community that the city has their backs. That's the essence of the program, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions you might have.
Anyone got any questions or comments? Kevin?
So, Roger, the, I can think of one business that opened, they actually had a very successful business, sold it, and opened the day of the pandemic, the day everybody got shut down. Would they be able to piggyback off of their old business, or would they have to go buy the new business?
So, that very same situation perhaps was the very same business. That came up at EDAC and was discussed at some length. Typically, a business has to be in operation for two years to qualify. However, we, after that came up at EDAC and that type of situation was discussed, if they have a history in the community, the loan committee has the ability to waive that requirement.
And then, members of EDAC, will they be eligible for this?
There's no, in the draft guidelines, there's no prohibition to that.
But they would not be...
Unless they're sitting on, they could not sit on the loan committee, though, and vote on their own loan.
Just a comment, you know, Andy, I thank you so much for your stewardship of our money that we can do this. Lisette, thank you very much. Please thank the Finance Office. The fact that any city in the middle of this pandemic would have the ability to do this, I am so proud of staff enabling us to do this. I love this project, and I hope that the City of Norco is going to be able to participate in it. But I really, from the bottom of my heart, thank staff for creating the situation where we, as a city, can actually put money on the table for people, because people are really struggling. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Ted?
Roger, the vetting process, and I don't want to, and I'm fully supportive of this. I was, I had made a comment that this is what we need to look for, at least not until 2021, but to see what happened. But I'm glad you brought this up. The vetting process for these businesses, when the feds first put their program through to help out businesses, to me, it was helter-skelter, kind of winner-take-all situation, and there was no money left. I'm looking at $150,000, which you're talking about appropriation. In a vetting process like this, how do we make sure that these are Norco? I mean, do you have the steps? I know you have the, you went through the draft guidelines, but I'm just, we've been burnt before. And this isn't an auto mall or things like that, but this is still the residents' money. It's their tax, it's their money that we've had. So this is unique, as far as a small city like ours has to do. Go through the vetting process for me, if you have it.
Yeah, so, the, as your guidelines indicate, they have to meet, you know, first, the initial requirements, be in business for a couple of years, employ no more than 25 employees. Then they have to submit, you know, documentation, profit and loss statements. Obviously, they need a valid Norco business license. Bank statements are required. The loan committee has the ability to request additional information, including running a credit inquiry, proof of business liability insurance, of course, and frankly, anything else that the loan committee deems necessary and reasonable to make a determination on the case. The reason we're requiring business owners to personally sign a promissory note with the city is because the issue came up at EDAC, and I think justifiably so. They had the concern that a lot of small businesses, especially after the past six months, may not, may not be, may not have the ability to service this loan in addition to the other debt that they may have incurred, and including other government programs that they may also owe on. So that's why we decided we needed to hold the business owner, he or she, personally responsible. And that reduces the risk to the city.
Loan committee, and that is made up of who?
So the way we, we're proposing that three EDAC members serve on that committee under the supervision of staff.
And the staff would, Andy would include?
The loan committee, assisted by myself and somebody from the Finance Department, they would make recommendations to the city manager, who would make the final determination.
Okay, now I'll go back and, maybe this is a John question. Legal documentation and everything, I mean, we go to the bank, we ask for a loan, I mean, you're going to fill out pages and pages and pages and a whole lot of other stuff. I don't want to make this to where it's so cumbersome that it's, it's not effective.
Yeah, it's basically a loan agreement and promissory note.
Okay.
And, I mean, we're, yeah, I mean, basically that, that the individual is going to pledge whatever assets that they have toward repayment of the loan.
Nobody wants to do it.
I'm a business, I must write the criteria. Ask for time for the previous. Committee should be able, I mean, whether this is...
I'll go with the catch principle. Keep it safe and simple, okay? Thank you.
Robin?
Roger, I just have a couple of questions for you. You have the list of required documentation here, much of what Andy just mentioned, and then it talks about the eligible use of funds and either physical improvements or working capital, but then it goes on to say, the specific uses of the funds will be considered by the loan committee. So is that going to be another set of documentation or paperwork that they're going to have to include as an addendum?
It'll be part of the loan agreement.
So it will be part of the loan agreement? So it is more documentation in addition to the required?
Well, the loan agreement is going to say, basically, I want to, I'm borrowing this amount of money, and here's what I'm going to use it for.
Okay, so it's not like drawings and all that kind of stuff? It's literally just listing?
The application just requires a very short synopsis of what they wish to use the funds for. That way, the loan committee can get a feel as to whether or not they're overextended in a particular area or not.
Okay, and then my last question, because we do live in a smaller community, is there some confidentiality clause or something for the members of the loan committee that specific information to businesses in town is not shared or made public?
That would be the first directive at their first meeting, that all application information is strictly confidential.
I think there should be something that they sign, and it could be grounds for removal from EDAC if information from that committee is made public.
It also could be grounds for personal liability.
Okay, yeah, so I just want to make sure the loan committee, you know, that that's something that's thought about and talked about, because we all know, you know, the potential for how word gets around in Norco.
We deal with that same issue of discretion and confidentiality with our affordable home programs, with rehab, because they all require income.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Sure.
That was a good question, Robin, or a good statement there, because it gets out, well, it'd be all over social media and the...
Greg?
Evening, Roger. I like this program. Years ago, I guess, when we had redevelopment money and we had the facade program, and for the most part, that was very successful, and a lot of good came out of that. So I like the program. I like us reaching out to, you know, assist, you know, small businesses and any Norco business that's in need. But some of my concerns are with this, that it's not ready yet to come to council. And part of that is just generally, I don't think all the mechanics have been worked And that's my concern, that I would certainly support it, but I think the committee needs to do more work into the research of it. Excuse me, it's just like when we were talking about facades, and some of the notes I made were, I'm going to come and borrow $20,000 to do a new facade of my building. Do I have to pay for a building permit?
Well, yeah, somebody does. It doesn't come out of the loan.
Right. Is it, it doesn't make sense to come out of the loan, you know, to borrow the money. So is that, is there a cost for the building permit? That was just one thing that jumped up at me on that.
And if I may, excuse me, you know, what we feel we're bringing tonight is a conceptual program. There still needs to be some, you know, additional guidelines established, some details, and that would be, if you were to move forward with this program, we would go back to EDAC and hash out some of the detailed items like you're, that you brought up, and some of your colleagues.
You know, I always love to tease with you, but that sounds like something from years ago that was brought before Congress, that said, we need to pass this before, or we need to pass it before we can understand what's inside of it. So let's stay with mechanics there for a minute. You made a comment earlier as far as administering the loan and how that is going to be handled, and your comment was, somebody from Finance will do that. So are we going to dump all this on Lisette? Has Finance had any input into this at all? So are we going to dump all this on Lissette? Has finance had any input into this at all?
We, we've had some discussions.
Okay. But you see what I'm saying? Your comment was, somebody from finance.
No, I said somebody from finance would assist the loan committee in making their determinations or answering any questions they might have had from a financial perspective. The loans are, are very similar to what we do for the homeowners, rehab loans. The documentation is quite similar, promissory note, loan document, loan agreement. The process of, the accounting process is very similar.
But has finance been brought into this conversation with EDAC? I guess that's a Lissette question, but.
They have not appeared at EDAC, but I've, I've had conversations with Lissette about the program.
And then go back to John just for a second. Is, like on executed documents, on promissory notes and that, are those, is that still considered unsecured?
Yes.
Okay, so I think that's something that needs to be hashed out also, is how could we make this a secured note?
Mm-hmm.
Profit and loss statements, you have an and/or, you know, on required documentation, is it going to be both, profit and loss and business tax returns? Or who's going to decide, you know, one or the other? So it just, like I said, I like the program, but I think the, the committee needs, it needs to go back to the committee and work out some of these finer points. And then I think with me, then you'd certainly have the support for the program, because I like it, and I know how successful the facade program was. And any helping hand we can give our businesses is well-intentioned.
I mean, you've touched on the documentation, and, you know, every business is a unique little environment, and each one needs to be treated as a unique entity. And so different, different documentation may be required for different business owners. The, the first meeting of the loan committee, they will have to establish a detailed protocol, very much like the one you're suggesting we present to you tonight. And they will, they will be asking for the same thing from everybody, but will have the, the right to request additional, if reasonable, documentation based on the circumstances.
Looking at the documents or the requirements that have been outlined here, and given the amount of loan that we are talking about, I believe all the essential elements that are required to effectively implement this program have been outlined. As far as the role of the finance department, I don't think that is a policy question here that needs to be incorporated. Their role is obviously, they're going to process a check when a loan has been approved, and make sure that it's recorded. This is not a loan that is going to be amortized and paid over a period of time, over a period, monthly, over a period of time, is going to be paid when you're ready to pay it off, whether it's 18 months or whatever time period you choose not to exceed the 60 months. In terms of the facade program, I think even what I see here is much more stringent than what we had in a facade program, which was actually, people have different opinions of that, wasn't an amount that was repayable. And we spent quite a substantial amount on the facade program. But anyways, again, it's my belief that for a loan of ranging from the amount that we've stated here not to exceed $20,000, and the documentation amount that is, the amount of documentation that is required, as well as the amount of review process that is required, I, in my opinion, I think strongly that there's plenty of that here.
I'll always trust your opinion on, you know, financial requirements, Andy. Somewhat curious on how we're going to administer all of this, and how we're going to get the word out, that, obviously, three members from the commission. Are we going to have to have another consultant to administer all of this? Okay. So it's just going to be three EDAC members and yourself?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Mm-hmm. I guess where I'm getting, like with our home loan programs, that we have another administrator. This is not at that magnitude. Okay?
If you leave it at 150,000, and I zoom in, next 10,000, that's actually 15 loans. And if it goes to 20,000, that's even lower.
So.
I expect if this thing becomes really successful, that the city council will consider increasing the funding level so that we can help more, more businesses. But I also recognize the need to cap it so that we are not overexposed, maybe 10,000 perhaps. Again, as the loans are paid back, they go into that fund and becomes available to the next one.
And that was leading into another question I had as far as the limitations. So at $150,000, we get, you know, seven businesses right out of the gate, and it's successful. What's going to be that cap? What account would that come out of? Would that be strictly general fund, or do we look at special asset fund? You know, what if a larger magnitude, you know, on the success of this? What if we have 50 people, you know, at the door?
It can be a first come, first served. I still would start at 150,000. And if I, you know, we stop those 150,000, I would look to come back to the city council, perhaps for additional 100,000. Again, the city council, obviously, you can authorize as much as you want, but I would like to limit the amount that the city has by way of exposure to this program. And I think in, to 250,000. So if you come first, you get the money. And once the money runs out, unfortunately, it's out until somebody pays back into the program, then you'll get funded.
After 24, 36 months, you'll start to see.
Just why the men not even need it. If it's for cash flow purposes, it could just be for six months, and then come back and pay.
Yeah, and people are encouraged to pay off their loan in the first 18 months anyway. After a while, you're going to start seeing a lot of these funds recycle. And the beauty of it is, you know, there's an, there's an impact to the budget initially. But over time, these funds are simply recycled. One person pays off, creates an opportunity for the next, for their neighbor.
And our special asset reserve fund is, I'd say, very healthy, that, that wouldn't be much of an impact to that fund at all. You know, I'll just reiterate, I like the program. It's all, everything's good with it. I just think that I'd like to see some EDAC and some of the mechanics just get a little closer, some of these bugs worked out, and then, then brought back to us.
Well, we'll be happy to bring you back some protocols that the loan committee has established, so there's greater clarity. And we'd be happy to update you on that, absolutely.
But other than that, you know, I appreciate the work that you've put into it and, and the committee, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Powell.
This last eight months, you know, we've seen what it has done to businesses. And while I say that this is not a COVID program, it, it really has created a sense of urgency for local businesses in general.
Right.
We see how fragile they can be. But, you know, a year from now, hopefully, things will be better, and people will be using this money to expand their businesses rather than just holding on. So.
But it comes back to, you know, cleaning, cleaning up the town, in a way. You know that I'm sure there's folks that, you know, want to improve their business, and like I said, also need a helping hand. And it's all good. Thank you, Roger.
Yes, go ahead, Robin.
Roger, I have one other question. So let's say we get this, you know, the applicants and the money is out. Are you going to have a waiting list where people are already kind of pre-approved, or are they going to have to reapply when there's a notice that goes out that there's money, that it's been replenished?
Well, I would imagine we would institute a waiting list.
Okay.
So that.
Okay, when they come back. Okay. Thank you.
I do have one more thing. Roger, on this and your draft guidelines, we may want to include, and this is a legal thing from John, a 209 type of a thing, probably just 209, we're all inclusive on that, just to make sure that we're doing things above board, especially in this state.
Should you approve this tonight? I've got a whole bunch of documents going out to him tomorrow for review, so.
Okay, I just, I'm reading through your guideline, and I didn't see that. So I just want to make sure that we're all inclusive.
And I, I appreciate the, that. You know, we want to be, we want to be, do this properly.
Yeah, yeah, we need to have that. All right, thank you.
No, I think that's a good program, Roger. Thank you for bringing it to us and everything. So what's your people's?
Mayor, I do have one public comment.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. We do have one public comment that did come in right before I came. This is a great opportunity to help our small businesses that are suffering and need to access this option. I'd like to see the city raise the amount available to 500,000 in order to help more. Please vote yes on this agenda item 5B and consider adding fund as well. Andrea Gladson. And those are all the comments we have.
That's all the ones we have. Okay.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Okay, moving right along. Item D, no, item, item C is adopting the revised vehicle miles traveled thresholds, and that is the planning director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. You'll recall that back in June, we adopted a new resolution, or we adopted a resolution requiring a new format for traffic studies in order to be, meet the requirements of SEQA. And it's a vehicle miles traveled analysis. And in addition to that, we're keeping our level of service analysis so that we get the funding that we need to upgrade roads and signals as needed, which we might not get with just a VMT analysis. So we've been implementing it and discovered that there was an important omission in that original resolution. We needed to include the, let me read it correctly. We needed to include a baselines and thresholds of significance table in that resolution. And by not doing so, basically, each project has to look at the entire city of Norco and come up with the, and would not be able to meet the VMT thresholds. And as a result, would be saddled with significant improvements that would be just infeasible for any one project to do. So what we're, what's being proposed tonight is this new resolution that does include that table, and this would replace that previous resolution that was adopted back in, back in June. And so with that, I can answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Ted?
Well, Greg, we'll start with you then.
I'm not going to let Steve off that easy. Okay. It's an easy question. So we talked about consistency with the circulation element.
Mm-hmm.
When did we last do our current circulation element?
About one year ago?
[laughing].
You know what? Pretty close, actually. Yeah, it's been a while. We're definitely behind on our general plan.
Okay. So do you honestly think it's like 20 years ago?
Yeah, I think it's.
Okay. So further in the staff report, are we going to have issues with SEQA being in compliance with a circulation element that's over 20 years old?
The, well, we're going to be in compliance with SEQA because we require the VMT analysis, because that's what SEQA requires. We will still be in compliance with SEQA because the level of service analysis is in addition to the VMT analysis. So the, the level of service analysis will allow us to be consistent with our old circulation element, and will be consistent with our new circulation element when it gets upgraded. So that's why we require both.
And knowing that we have a potential mixed-use project coming up in the future, how will this, what will we require of mixed-use projects to, you know, stay consistent with this now?
Well, in fact, that, that's how this issue came up, because when they did their VMT analysis, they did it per the state guidelines that were established when the, the state laws were changed to require the VMT analysis. And then when it got reviewed by our city engineer, they looked at and said, no, you're not compliant with the city's resolution for the reason I said, that we didn't include that table that allowed them to. And I knew I was not going to remember the terminology, but it allowed, with that thresholds table, they, you know, for lack of whatever the right term is, they test out of it. So they, they just have to focus on their project specifically. Without including that table, they'd had, they had to look at the whole city. So it was a good catch by our consulting engineer, and that's why we're here tonight.
Okay. And in the future, I mean, what type of mitigation, you know, to reduce that, the vehicle miles traveled?
Right.
What would be some?
Well, that's actually one.
Future mitigations that you would look at on a project?
That's one of the types of developments that a VMT analysis encourages, is a mixed-use development. So the idea is that you're combining recrea, not recreation, but residential plus commercial to serve. So it kind of can, it's, the idea is it would provide some opportunity for some internal cross of uses. The reality is that they'll probably come from other neighborhoods. But the, the idea of a mixed use is that you're reducing the vehicle miles traveled because some of the residential can just almost walk to the other side of the project to, to do whatever retail that they want to do.
So it wouldn't just be like, give me, give me a few more bicycle racks or anything like that?
No, no. I mean, that would be part of it.
Correct.
But the mixed-use development is identified as one of the key types of developments to, to meet the VMT threshold analysis.
Okay. Thanks, Steve. Thank you, Mayor.
Robin?
Kevin?
Ted?
Well, it probably won't be you, but when are we going to upgrade the traffic circulation plan, you just, we asked? I mean, this is, Chad, you probably can dump it on you, so. Or is it RKA? Alma's looking back there.
Now, Alma is probably running with her tail between her legs, because it will be. Alma.
Okay.
And we need to do it. I mean, they're all behind. The most pressing is the housing element, so that we can maintain our certification of that when the new RENA numbers come out. That's the next one that we're going to be working on. But they all need to be upgraded.
Okay, and I don't want to get off on that side, but we have seven areas, correct? Or is it eight?
Yep.
Seven. And we know the traffic one's bad, and the housing one we've been fighting with. And so I'm not picking on you, but we need to get either that or we need to get these done, so we're not in a situation that we're in, this is nothing to look at you, because I know you've been carrying a lot of hats, so.
And we are working on them, but we haven't just ignored them. So we've got two of the elements that we've made a lot of progress on, to update those and get them, that could come relatively quickly. But we've got to do a lot of work on our open space element, which is combined with our parks master plan, all in one, and we've started working on that one.
Well, I'm not a fan of hiring a big other consultant to do all these, but we probably need to, and I'll look at Andy, is we need to get, we need to get it done, and you know that, especially, and this is not, this is because we are going to go finishing up this year, when that census thing gets published for 2020, we're starting a whole new decade next year in January. We need to be updated, and we need to be current.
Yep.
And so Alma, I have to look back at you, we got to get these seven areas done as we progress, because it's just going, they're going to domino if we don't. And we're going to be looking at another 20-year report that nobody's going to want to come and look at it, that we're lucky that our builders and our developers are working here now, but we need to get those done. We can't look back. And I know Andy's, it's on his...
[inaudible]
I know, I know, I know, I know I am. That's, but, and that's why I asked you when, but I know it's not on yours, it's on their plate, but Andy, it's on your, yeah, okay, so I'm just, all right, thank you.
Kevin?
I have nothing. Do we have any cards?
We have no speaker cards on this item.
Okay, you made a motion to approve. Anybody want to second that motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Grumeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion, passage unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, item D is also Steve's, it's the Hamner Avenue widening, widening project from Slashman to Citrus and Detroit to Sixth Street.
This is your last presentation?
This is it.
Don't screw it up.
Hopefully not. If I screw it up, I'll just defer to Chad. He can come and finish it. Now, this is a, this is kind of a combination item with what the city council already approved back in April of 2019. Back then, the city council approved and mitigated negative declaration for the new Hamner Bridge. This is related to that in that it addresses the widening of Hamner Avenue north to Citrus and then south, north of the bridge to Citrus, and then south of the bridge to Detroit, to widen Hamner Avenue so that the lanes transition well, and actually, the lanes continue and transition as they need to, to existing developments north and south of the bridge. So what, what happened, similar to the MND that was approved for the bridge, the, there's an initial study prepared that identifies potential impacts to, from a project that need to, in that analysis, there are four conclusions: no impact, less than significant impact, less, less than significant impact with mitigation, and potentially significant impact. So if you're a developer, you want most of those to be no impact, because you know, that means it's good to go forward. So the initial study was prepared, and they identified, there's several categories that are addressed in that initial study, and I won't list them all, but it basically is the, the full panorama of potential categories of impacts, from air quality to soil contamination to water quality impacts. And so the conclusion of the initial study was that all of the impacts were either no impact or less than significant impact. And so with that, what's being proposed tonight is that the city council adopt a mitigated negative declaration, the MND, for this widening project north and south of the bridge. The, this was continued from the first time it was scheduled, because there was a tribal consultation that was required because of AB 52, and it couldn't get done in time for the last time this was scheduled. That has since been done, and the only changes were that a, an archaeological monitor be available. They're not going to monitor the grading, but they're going to be available should anything be found. And then the other one is a tribal cultural resources monitor, and they will be monitoring ground disturbance until such point as the ground disturbance ends or they conclude that any remaining ground disturbance is not going to discover any tribal resources, cultural resources that need to be mitigated. And if they do discover things, then everything stops, and they, they have to figure out then what, what to do with those resources. So with that, with those changes, it's, we're recommending that the city council adopt the mitigated negative declaration and direct me to send it forward for, to the OPR. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Okay, Robin, we'll start with you. Greg?
Page four, under energy. And just a clarification on this, Steve, that although there would be an increase in energy consumption during construction, the increases would only be temporary, no longer than four months. Is that four months? Where's the four-month number come from? It can't be construction activities, because that will be longer than four months.
That, it's just the, the ground disturbance. The finish of the project obviously will take longer than four months. This is just talking about the widening of Hamner Avenue.
Okay, so just ground disturbance?
Yes.
Okay. And then just another comment, and this was on, page six, on noise. We did receive a, a letter from a resident here a few weeks ago, and I wanted to thank you and Chad for following up on the resident's concern on, you know, the overall long-term impact on road noise, not considering construction. So just appreciate your effort on that. That's all I have. Thank you, Steve.
Kevin?
You've done a great job, man. Way to go out.
It was interesting that the Hamner Avenue, that the tribe would be involved there, because the village was actually where the River Road Bridge was. Do you remember if they had a consultant there then for that?
Um, they did not. So I was kind of surprised that it came up with this part of the project as opposed to the bridge, but they didn't.
Yeah, because that village wrapped from Bluff right around the river and went down. It was not as big as Temeska, but it was pretty large. It's interesting. I mean, by now, there's nothing left, I mean, that other place. Good job.
Thanks.
Ted?
A couple of questions, I'm going to, on the greenhouse gas emissions, it states less than significant impact. But when you read into it, it says no impact. And the reason I bring that up, because your clarification, either there is no impact, or there's no impact, less than significant impact, and then this category has less than significant impact. But as you read it from page four to page five, it talks about no impact on the plan. I'm just wondering, is that, so you say no impact, or is that, you probably got this from the...
Yeah, that, what happens in, if you look at an initial study format, and they're the same statewide, every jurisdiction uses the same format.
Yeah, I know, it's a format.
There's, there's several categories under each of these listed categories that you're looking at. So for instance, for soil, there is actually, I think, eight different categories under soil impacts that are analyzed, and each one, each one of those gets a no impact, less than significant, one of those four, four standards. So, and it's the same with greenhouse gases. So the, this is, this is just a summary statement, so, and I don't have it with me, I apologize, but the, there probably was one of those that was less than significant, and all the rest were no impact.
Okay, so that's why they couldn't label it down there as no impact.
Right.
Okay. And then I, you already hit the one up on noise, and Newton already talked about that one, because that was the same thing. All right. Other than that, thank you.
Okay, do we have any cards from the public?
We have no speaker cards on this item.
Okay, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Thank you, Steve.
Councilmember Grumeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion, passage unanimous.
Okay. Item six is the communications from city council, city manager, and the staff. Well, Steve, Kevin, we'll start with you.
I have nothing tonight, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ted?
Uh, this is more or less something to come up this weekend, going to be extremely hot coming up Labor Day weekend. Also, from what I was reading, we have a potential for a Santa Ana condition that may approve for the seat and going through. And I'm not saying it is, but the fire danger is going to be up real high. And then, Steve, it's not on your shoulders anymore, but Alma, I know you have code enforcement in there. This is just something we ought to think about. We have a lot of restaurants that came through, and eateries in town that put up the shades and the tents. Last year, we got caught off guard, because that Santa Ana condition came early, it was the first weekend in October. So we, we, just something to think about when we're out and about, and some of these merchants that have that outside eatery thing, those, they're not going to withstand if we had that same condition this year. So I just said, which is something we ought to think about. And we, but we go to these places and let them know, hey, it's September, so we can have winds anytime. Thank you.
Andy? John?
You perhaps already know this, but the duplex bill, the pad, it failed as a consequence of them stepping on their toes and not making it before midnight.
Good job, John.
11:20, yeah.
Matt? Lieutenant? Zep? Sam? Sam, you're always quiet. Why do you even show up here? Steve?
Yeah.
Alma? Brian?
Just to let you know that we will be doing a celebration virtual 9/11 recognition, and then also, we will have the Veterans Memorial open from 7:00 to noon on 9/11, and that's to try and help beat the heat, as we do have some people who would like to go up there, so that will be done as well.
Going to try to open it any other days during the week?
Yeah, we're looking at actually doing that, and with the new recent order by the governor, based on percentages of what we can, I think we're going to be implementing that, too. I've had a discussion with staff after our conversation, so be looking forward to seeing something come out soon on that.
Okay, thank you. Chad?
Thank you. I just wanted to review two items. Matt, if you could put up the first item for the screen for the council. I just wanted to review two items that we've completed or prepared for the public. One of them was last week, when our communications director put out some information related to all the capital projects for this year. We have updated the website. Folks can find that information on the city's website. It's really easy to find if you go to City Hall and to Public Works, and right in here, we have capital projects. And basically, this is where it lists, lists all the projects we have for this, this current year. We have 93 individual projects that council has approved. Some of them are carried over from prior years, some of them are new, but right now, most of these are pretty much Brian and I, so we're, we have 93 individual projects, and it's really easy to search for your own project. So if you're interested in street projects, you can look for any of the projects that might be there. It will list them all here, and you can read off what you might have, and if you're interested, and say, I want to hear, see about Hillside, it'll tell you where that project's going to be in the information. So it's really detailed as we can to keep folks on an update. We try to update this information at least once a quarter, just to give you the progress, what we've done, what we spent, as far as dollars, where we're at in percentage of the project. So, but it's, it's a really good tool, if you want to know. If you also want to go back into prior years, it does show you prior years' projects that have been completed. So if you go to a fiscal year, and you want to see last year, we completed 30 projects, and you can see where those projects are. If you come back out and see all the projects we did were in those areas, if you go to any prior year and say, well, 2017, 18, you know, we did, I think it was, hey, show up? Thinking.
I find it quite helpful, Chad.
There we go, 23 in that day. So again, so we try to now to give our history, which I think is hopefully useful to the public and council, if you ever want to find out what projects we did, when we did them, how many we've done, and demonstrate the work that we are doing. This really gives you that information, so it is available to the public, and they can pull that information at any time. And we try to update as well as we can. And you could even print out reports for each year, if you want to, or by topic, if you want to just have the data yourself and review it, what we've done. So that's all there, so we've really tried to be detailed. So we kind of use this as our chronological history of what we're, what we're currently working on, and what we've done in the past. Happy to answer any questions we have on that before I go on to the next item.
Hey, Chad, what are you going to paint those blue tanks?
They are, they are painted.
Oh, they're, they're painted, not because they're blue.
They're blue. Yeah, that's the color.
You're killing me.
No, that's the color council approved when we, when we reviewed it three years ago now. Okay, there we go, it's up here. So the other one I wanted to review with you is, this is the database that we have for all the speed feedback signs that council approved us to install. If you recall, we, you guys authorized us to install 20 as an initial test. This is the software that we use, that we're, got all the signs up and running, and this is the data that we see on a regular basis that we can review. We're providing this information to the sheriff's department, so they can review it in terms of what they want. But basically, what this is, is this shows you each individual location where there's a sign. The gray is the amount of cars per day, and the red is the amount of violators per day, based off the speed limit. So you can see in some of these areas, they're pretty significant. Bluff Street, it's pretty high. Sierra gets a lot of activity. River Drive gets activity, Seventh Street. Some areas almost have little, but here, you got Crestview, really high activity. California Avenue, surprisingly, you know, it, it's not as fast as people think, as far as the speeders. And that could be, again, where we have it placed versus, you know, other issues. California, so it's pretty consistent in either direction. It's not as much speeding as there as we think, but it's definitely a lot of cars that hit that area. But Sierra's pretty heavily, so this is every day we see this information. Ironically, Corydon, where we placed those, have been, has shown us pretty definitively that it's not a speeding area, at least in the area where we placed the sign, that we believe we placed it in the wrong location. There's not enough space between the stop sign that's going, this is going northbound on this particular station, that it's so close to the stop sign, there's really not enough speed. So we are going to make some adjustments to some of these signs, specifically the ones on Corydon. Both of them, you know, don't really have a huge, huge jump, and so we're going to move some of these signs. But at least we have data, it's every day. You can refine the information, if you want to come in and actually look at it, and tell you what it is by a minute-by-minute, or, you know, break of 30 minutes to 60 minutes for a full day. So it tells you, you know, every 30 minutes, really, where you're at in the violator, so you can really drill down to see where in the violation... you can really drill down to see where the violations are mainly occurring. Is it the morning? Is it the afternoon? So this is a good information, at least for our officers to look at and kind of figure out if they want to plan when they're going to be there. And again, they're professionals. They pretty much know anyway, but at least it gives them data to back up kind of their, their process. So, you know, it's, it's been really neat as far as being able to see this information live. It also, we have maps that show where, where all this stuff is individually, or we can see it individually or as a group of where everything's placed. For us, in this case, it always goes out and it comes in and shows where our stuff is. So we can see that. So we ever expand, we know where our, our information is. We can click on a, on a sign and look at it here, and it'll show us the same data. And we can research, search that way. So it's pretty good software. It's very thorough. We've had, had some glitches with a couple of signs that the contractor has worked out with us, or actually, the vendor has worked out with us very fairly in replacing some signs that failed and how they failed under the warranty. And we're real happy with how these are performing, but we, some of them we do acknowledge we need to move to different locations because they're not, they're not, they're not ideal where they were placed. And that was a mistake on our misjudging where they should be. But overall, I think it's a good program. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback, actually people asking for some in their neighborhoods. So, and again, eventually, what our goal was, and reminded the councils, we would probably put these in, try to evaluate it for a year, come back with a report to see really whether we think it's a benefit, whether we want to do the second phase and how, and if we want to have a second phase or maybe just move some of these. Again, we're concerned about whether or not we put too many of them out there becomes, you know, blight on itself in that it's just too much visual graffiti, as we call it sometimes. But I think overall, it's been very positive. I just wanted to show you that it is up and running. We do and, and have data that we can see on a regular basis, and it is going to be provided to the sheriff's department so they can regularly come in and, and see how they want to use it. But I, I think it's, it's really shown itself to be very valuable. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions?
Have you had a sit-down with the lieutenant?
Next week.
On this?
Yeah, next week, we're going to go over it and give them their passwords and review the software and how they, how to use it.
And then we're going to be, to the lieutenant, we'll be developing a plan of attack on this and... Okay. Well, I'm sure it is, right?
Yeah.
And Chad, I also wanted to compliment you on your previous presentation on the capital improvement projects and, you know, just how we keep progressing and getting the information out to the residents and for all of us. And it surely beats that old two weeks that we used to hear for years, okay, that we have actual proof, you know?
Right. And that's the main goal, especially on the capital project. We just wanted to demonstrate that we truly have work going on and we've done work.
Yeah.
And so it's documented, which is, is great.
And Andy, that also includes you where we've been with, you know, overall community outreach in, in getting that message out, so.
That's all I have, but thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Chad. Dana?
I just want to say congratulations to Steve and good luck on your retirement. And thank you so much. From the first day I started here, just a little over a year ago, my goal was always to make Steve laugh when he came into my office because he always came in so serious, so ready just to find out about his request or the public notice. And it was like, my goal was, you need to slow down. We got this. And I wanted to make him laugh. But he's been so respectful to the city clerk's office and to myself since I've been here and always made me feel so welcome. So thank you and good luck. Have fun.
Greg?
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, once again, going to miss you. Enjoy everything that you've done. It's been, it's been a pleasure working, you know, with you. And Alma, that, don't take that too serious about that you're going to have to do all these, the seven elements and bring them all up to speed because I'm thinking about six months, Steve's going to be looking for an outside consulting job. And we could start him with the circulation element. So best of luck to you, buddy.
Robin? Steve, one thing. You're leaving. I'm leaving. One thing we didn't get done that we talked about that was going to happen two weeks, fifteen years ago, was that Fifth and Hamner intersection. I mean, you got it on the plans for that hotel there, but we were going to have that done quicker than two weeks, fifteen years ago, but it hadn't been done. But that's not our fault. We tried, buddy. So don't, don't go off with that on your conscience. And thanks, Steve. Been good working with you. I just got one more thing here. This is a, congratulations to the Norco High School FFA program designated as a three-star national chapter award winner. Congratulations, Robin, and you and your group. And that's all I have and nothing else we will adjourn.